I was looking at four twenty nine as I was walking up the stairs.
I won't tell you what I tell my football players if they show up at four thirty.
I understand.
They be with these ladies in the parking lot right now.
What's up?
Good evening, welcome to the selectmen's special meeting. Something special about this is uh Tuesday, September thirtieth two thousand twenty five at four thirty. Uh our first one is a workshop on short term rentals. I don't know who we wanna kick it off.
I you know, I I think we could talk about this as your third of meeting, hopefully a third of three.
Yeah.
Um on developing some of the criteria that you hope will be incorporated maybe in a short term uh rental ordinance. And the turn duration, I think has walked you through
What?
over well eighty four criteria that you've looked at thus far and maybe we can bring it to the finish line tonight.
Alright. And on that note, just picking up on that, um I have some items that I termed revisit. I have little marginal notes that um you'd wanted to revisit. So um I'm happy to just kind of launch into those things if you want to do so. Um does that make sense? Yeah.
Well revisit them anyway, so right, this is what we're doing tonight is revisit first.
That was my thought because um you know, we've gone through already one pass through to eighty four.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And then I had a note um that at the last workshop, we ended at our revisitation at number twenty two. But I also took notes on those um big ticket items that you wanted to talk about. So I can um and there are a few little notes that I had question marks that I wanted to clarify, I got it right. So maybe we can start with those, cause those are the easy ones and then we can start the revisited tougher questions, okay? I just wanna make sure, I had a note that says no short term rentals in RV parks or RV parks, RVs parked in somebody's yard, is that right? I had a note there. Um I wanted to confirm that that was the the pleasure of the board.
I believe so.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, the camp you're talking about campgrounds and um the RV parks, right?
But if you But she also we included if somebody just put the camper in their yard, can you short term rental it?
Oh. Oh.
People do a lot.
Yeah.
I know, I was gonna do it. No, no, just kidding.
Yeah, people I know, air trains, that kinda thing, yeah.
There are in RV parks.
Technically, they're already short term rentals, right?
Um I'm not sure about the limitations on that. I know they're seasonal, but I think you and that's one of the other big questions is that my recollection is is that the desire was to define a short term rental from day one through six months to dovetail it with the ADU, which was six months and more. So I don't know if that necessarily coincides and I look to Mike and Jody on that when it comes to the um the art the the campgrounds to see if that is consistent. I just don't know the answer to that.
Oh, Mike and Julie, wouldn't it be a different thing? So if I've never done this, so I don't I don't know this, but the idea is if I had an RV and I wanted to rent a site for a week or three days, I can do that. But we're we're saying somebody that parks a camper in their yard and then tries to do that for three days or something like we we don't want that, right? Is that what we're saying?
That that is an an issue, yes.
I think current RV parks, I think their season is longer than six months.
That's what I thought. I thought it was like nine months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, it's longer, it is, yeah, the parks.
Yeah, yeah.
But then also um like, and I will say this, when we put the addition on our house, um we couldn't live in our house. So we stayed in our motorhome and it took us three months to get the addition done. And I would be very upset if I was all couldn't have it. You're not renting it to yourself. So it's only with rentals and.
Yeah.
That's right, it's not on our own, it's not on or occupied.
Okay, alright.
For when the grandkids come up to have places to.
Right. Right, thinking of it, yes.
Yeah. You know, those exceptions that you better write and put in writing.
Um I also had a note, and I think this is right, that you did not want to have short term rentals within a school zone, which I think was in defined within a hundred a thousand feet. Um does that sound? Because
I think we had mentioned is like some type of um within the school zone having some type of like uh check to make sure they weren't a sex offender or something like that, I think is what the that was.
Okay, if it was within a thousand feet, then we could check that.
Right. Did we? That was my recollection. Anybody does anybody remember it different differently?
No, something like that.
I don't think it was a prohibition, I think it was.
So like you could do it, but you gotta jump through, like you gotta get some extra stuff to, okay, that makes sense.
Right.
Well, we
How many?
We have hotels right now, then. Or one. And we don't.
Yeah, but that could be your grandfather's thing too.
Okay, yeah, I'm just think we don't check on them whether they have, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That was just my recollection, what we talked about.
No, I right.
So do we wanna keep that in or out?
Yeah, I I'm fine, I'm just speaking out loud, cause there's only one that I know.
Did you put except with exceptions to be determined?
Um I think I just said that it's not that you can't have an STR, but if you do within a thousand feet of a school zone, then you wanna have some confirmation that um I'm not sure who would do this, the host or the owner
Right.
would would do the check, but you know, I can figure that out.
How many? This probably doesn't affect that many units anyway. Potentially.
I I I meant the pleasure board.
I can only make it one, but that doesn't, well, no, it's Could be enough, so.
So we want this in?
I have no.
What number is that anyway?
Um I'm not sure, actually actually is one. I just had a note in my notes.
Oh, okay, alright.
Well, I think
Um oh, it's school ban zone, it's not a number, it was kind of in the introductory. It's on page um seven of. And there's a little bullet that asks about age related bans, you know, multiple booking bans, school zone bans.
How do you How do you enforce, would this be through whatever they like sign? Like how 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 would we do it differently than like a normal one outside of this?
That's the question, yeah.
Well, I I thought we, if I remember right, Jim's point is enforcement really isn't, I don't know how we enforce any of this, to be honest with you, so I mean we're just gonna move on and just make rules that we can't enforce. But that's why I understood it.
Well, that's my, at least that's that's the intent, to make rules that we don't wanna enforce.
Right. Right. Not that we don't want to, that we just don't have people that can.
A lot of that's the curiosity stick thing.
Right, no, right, I'm I'm just saying that it's really whispers on.
Well, maybe we should just leave the within a thousand feet and then if we if we when or does it, will that go out? That will be on it though, if we, okay, yeah.
I think.
I I just don't, I'm just, I agree with you Avery, I don't know how you're going to ask that. Someone says, oh, here's the place we can stay tonight or I'm coming in. And they walk in the door and how do they?
Well, if there's any concern, why don't we just prohibit anyone one within a thousand feet? It can't affect more than a few properties in the whole town.
And that's only if they
It only if they have short term rentals.
If that was a requirement and there was in fact deemed at some point an incident and there was a violation of that requirement, would that put the town, that would be some position.
Yeah, I mean, I I think not, because under the Main Tort Claims Act, there's this discretionary immunity, right? So as long as um it's you're exercising indiscretion in as to whether or not to enforce. Then I think, you know, again, there's exceptions and exceptions to the exceptions, but as a general rule, I think um there would be discretionary immunity there.
I would we shouldn't even put it down, I just.
I I guess the way I'm thinking of it, like a thousand feet is like it makes sense, right? But um if you have someone with really ill intent,
Yeah.
I think if their Airbnb is like two thousand feet away,
Yeah.
it's not gonna make a huge difference if they wanna do something evil.
I agree with you that on that one, so why don't we just not do it, scrap it?
I'm okay with that too.
Okay.
Would there be any potential that you pursuant to state law as far as the requirements of someone who is a registered offender?
I think the requirements are that you have to register,
Right.
not that you have to report and it's and then it gets
But but that you can't reside within a certain distance.
Ah, that's a, I think that's, yeah, um I'm not sure if it's but is that a resident, is it it is residing, yeah?
Right. I know.
Yeah.
No, my my mind um it actually affects quite a few.
Mm-hmm, right.
On Route one, not up here, it a thousand feet, one, two, three, four hotels that already exist plus some other rental units that might be there.
Yeah, but we're only talking about properties that wanna put a short term rental in a residential, otherwise residential property. It can't be that. I mean, I
Three.
You could do a what?
No, I know, I'm I am in my mind going through who I think might be looking at that.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem either way, it's uh it's such a small number.
I I, yeah, I don't It's such a small, and the other thing is I I think there's a problem with actually figuring out how to act when they walk in the door and secondly, um we don't require that of the of the hotels, do we? No, okay.
And then a thousand feet, I mean, if you take in uh well, let's see, the only place from the elementary school and head uh north, is it north?
West.
West.
There's no
But there's there may be, yeah, why would you restrict people four streets away, you know, there happen to be a thousand feet?
But I'm just thinking of the Route one, I'm thinking of the Right.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, yeah, let's just leave it.
Let's just leave it blank.
Not doing it, okay, and Mike, to your point, I just looked it up, it says they have to notify law enforcement, changing domicile,
Well, of course.
which obviously if you're vacationing for a few weeks, that's not it, residence, place of work or school, so it doesn't really address that. Okay, we're gonna leave that one be. Alright, um there was one thing last time we talked about response time for complaints, we said one point five hours, but I think we were gonna ask the PD, um and I'm not sure if that happened or if anybody had had a chance to talk to the police about whether they thought that was a reasonable period of time.
What number are you on now?
I'm, you know, I'm so sorry, I'm not tying it to numbers, I just had notes as to what the follow up items were. I apologize, there were, one of the items here was um is there going to be a policy that you have to respond to complaints within a certain period of time, it's number forty.
Do the owner respond?
Should criteria be established for response times for the designated contact when complaints arrive arise? And when government officials need to communicate?
Yeah, there should be.
But if you're complaining about something on Saturday, we're gonna, we're assuming the police are enforcing this complaint, if it's a complaint about
Right, depends on the nature of the complaint.
There's too many people in that thing, the police aren't gonna go and say, okay, one, two, three, four, you have too many people, you gotta leave it. So the one point five five hours doesn't work.
I my, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, yes, that was what I thought.
This is for the contact person, right?
Well, we're not saying the owner has to respond within four, I I always
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Or their designated contact.
Alright, my mistake.
And that's that's actually fair, because I mean someone at with a motel has to respond.
That is fair. Right. Right, right, that's fair.
Mm-hmm.
Um should additional responsibilities for the
So
so I'm sorry, should the
I mean, the reason I was confused, because you said I wanna find out, why do we have to find out from the police department, I didn't
I had a note that they said they would ask the police department if that was an appropriate amount of time.
Oh.
Um
Maybe.
Because that doesn't mean for them to physically go onto the property, it means they have to respond.
In some way. I don't think this is about the police having to respond.
No, 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 but I mean, if they're looking for the contact person, whether they're even if they're calling them, they're even
The fact, yes. They have to be available with him.
They have to be available for some kind of an answer, whether it's on a phone or
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, yes.
okay, so it doesn't mean they have to drive there.
Right.
So what do we say, I don't have anything written there, cause that must have been what we call, what did we say?
Well, it's reasonable to request the owner
An hour and a half. Yeah.
to have to respond within a certain period of time after a complaint.
Yeah, right, and what did we, what did you?
Yeah.
I know, if it's one and a half hours.
But we haven't established that?
I had one point five, so I just
Okay, one point five hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so the bigger issues, um there was a, and I think that you confirmed, yes, this is the case, but I just wanna make sure that there's a ban on ADUs being rented as short term rentals. And I think it almost goes without saying, because the definition requires it to be six months, so that's why we dovetailed the, we're good with that, okay?
Correct.
There was a lot of discussion and I think I had circled a big no at the end of it. Remember, there were discussions about exemptions about sort of workers, like traveling nurses or seasonal workers. Um but I think where you ended up, and please confirm, was that because the amount of time was six months, you were thinking that that would be sufficient to grant folks, you don't need to grant an exemption, because the period is long enough that it's possibly long enough that would accommodate those folks.
I will say that I just talked to a traveler um on Sunday who was working as a nurse at um a different medical center and um their term was three months.
Yeah, so that's that works, but I think there are some issues around seasonal workers for hotels and that now the season's becoming longer. I think you ended up with no, no exceptions, but I just wanna make sure, because there was a lot of discussion around that, I'm not sure there was total clarity there.
I think I was, I disagree with that this one, cause I think it should be three months or something, cause I I start thinking about the college kids that are gonna only be there June, July and August and they go back to college if they have, you know, if they wanna come. But I will be honest, we've had numerous kids from Midwest wanna work in Wells area and they can't get housing, so they don't come and we could use those, especially if these my main concern, these visas are now at a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, we're gonna, we're gonna have less people, you know what I mean, if that's the case. So I would like rather have a college kid be able to come and work, I think three months in those is is still within
Three months rather than six months?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I I support that.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, you don't necessarily even have to, if you're thinking about an exemption, you don't really need to specify a time, right? It can just be exemptions for
Work.
workers and we can define that in making sure that with proof of work from an employer and you might wanna say within a catchment area of a certain radius.
Work.
Okay.
I'm I'm fine, I'm fine with exemption for workers.
Yeah. Yeah, exemption for workers, right, and they just have to show proof, like you say, I think that would be fine, that's the best way to do it.
Do you wanna do a radius of a certain area? What do you think? What do you think's reasonable?
No, if they live here, they would have to be, they would have to be driving to wherever they're going, so if they're working here and wherever they're employed, it's an hour and a half away or
So you wanna just have them, yeah. I think we just wanna say proof of work, I don't want somebody to be able to say Massachusetts, or do you care?
Yeah. Right.
Like I I I'm just wondering, do you wanna put in?
Well, uh
So you're saying a mile radius like type of?
Yeah, in other words, their work has to be within a certain number of miles radius of of where the where the short term rental is.
Wow.
So, well, because somebody can say, well, I um I live in Connecticut and I work full time in Connecticut, but I wanna rent a place up here for nine months. Well, I have full time work. So, but we're not specifying how, where the work is.
I think if it was a, the only people that would be doing it for three months, say a three months or whatever, the workers that were doing that, they would be working at a temporary place for for a few months and um and I think they would have to have a, they would have to show the temporary.
Right, but the question is, where is that temporary work? Is it in Bangor or is it is it in Wells or it is, or is it in Wells and surrounding communities? The only reason to have a short term rental for work is to make it more convenient for you um to work locally, let's call it.
Right.
And so the question is, what's locally? And without specifying locally.
Do you wanna say it within the state of Maine? I mean, or do you think that um Portsmouth is close enough, or do you think that?
I think it's fifty, I'd say fifty mile radius.
Fifty mile radius, that's good.
Fine, yeah.
How how, again, like, how?
Here we go.
Nobody.
Nobody.
Okay, but like um
Well, it's the owner's responsibility to be able to prove that if questioned.
Okay.
And that is like evidence, that's pretty easy to show, here's my employer, this is where I work.
Right, I I Yeah.
Um and I think I heard you say ten students as well, do we wanna say an exemption for workers or students who proof of work or course of study within X period of?
Yeah.
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 That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, cause I wouldn't mind it too.
Yeah, that's somebody going to the community college.
Yeah.
I'd be kinda worried.
Community college, yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Mere is fifty miles away, like fifty miles, yeah, how far can you get for fifty miles?
It's pretty far.
Yeah.
I'm gonna
No, God, what's the guard?
Think about it, Boston's eighty two, so.
Oh, fifty miles is too much, yeah.
What's eighty two?
It should be something, you know, locally, maybe twenty, thirty miles.
Boston. Well, I was thinking, the only reason I was thinking, I was thinking going that way, is fifty mile radius, you know what I mean?
Right. I'm okay with fifty, I'm okay with fifty.
Somebody working on it.
I think if you wanna, if it's up to you if you wanna commute that far, right?
Fifty miles within the state of Maine?
No, because you're only
I know, well, I'm just asking.
I mean, twenty minutes from the
I would like have some, I can just see somebody bringing an interstate travel constitutional
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, it's not worth it.
Just say, just say fifty miles, I I think that's reasonable.
Um Yeah, I think that's perfectly fine. Um, okay. So waiting lists, we weren't sure about that one. This is all related to kind of caps and how you do that, so we, why don't we get into there? Once we start getting into the cap issue, that's kind of related, alright. Occupancy limits, remember we were discussing that? And my note here is that there were gonna be an occupancy limit, a certain number per bedroom, that code was gonna follow up regarding this. Um and how are we gonna determine limits on bedrooms, is it square footage, is it, you know, that kinda stuff? So that was a a big area that we wanted to put a pin in it, because it warranted some additional conversation.
Did we?
So
Well, go ahead, Jim.
Well, I was gonna say, so to be fair, it should be somewhat similar to um the rules that motels have. You know, so if there's a a bed and a couch in there, you could have three people in that room.
But I wonder, and this is, I I'm looking over my shoulder, I wonder, are there um square footage limitations, I would imagine, for life safety and or maybe it's other regulations, but um it's probably not just number of beds, you have to have a certain amount of square footage per
Right, sorry.
Sorry, I don't want to have my back too much.
No, that's fine. So through N S D A and the building code, it's so many square feet per person. Um so we would look at that for single family dwellings and for motels and give you both of those numbers, so you could determine from there.
Yeah, so it would be consistent.
Cause the motels have the a certain, so many people per room, usually.
Yeah.
Depending on the number of beds.
Mm-hmm.
True. I think it's depending on the number of square feet.
Yeah.
Pets don't matter in motels, right?
They can bring a cot in or something like that, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's in some motels, right?
So I'll get those numbers for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay, um and I think there was a conversation about what a bedroom is, you wanna limit it, you don't want it to be like common areas and the living area. Maybe defining it something as separate sleeping quarters, separate and distinct from common areas or something like that, is that? Cause I think there was a concern that you're just gonna overload, or folks are just overloading bodies in there. But maybe just having the square footage per person will cover it.
Well
Maybe we should cover it, because if they have a pullout couch, is that right?
Okay, so let's, we don't need to get too far into the weeds of that.
Yeah.
Okay, um as far as zones, there was a conversation about, at first I think there was an agreement that the ones that were recommended by the planning board in their initial, remember they drafted something way back when. Um but then I think we started to get into that issue around um kind of tourist areas versus non tourist areas. Um and so I wanted to revisit that, because I think where the tourist versus non tourist areas came up is when we, remember we were talking about caps? And there was sort of a notion that, okay, there's so many ways to skin that particular cat. It's been talked about a lot in this, and it and there's some great theories, right, right, okay, we look in a zone, we look at, you know, how many um dwellings are in that particular zone and then you can take a percentage. And I think that kind of was satisfying at the outset, like, oh, that makes sense, but then we got into that conversation about that, you know, it doesn't make sense to limit it. Um it makes more sense to limit them according to whether it's a heavily touristy area as opposed to not. So I think um we were pressed for time and decided to move on to other conversations that were easier. But now I'm here to uh ask you to focus on that particular issue.
So do you want us to focus on the the actual details or the the potential warning, ordering with?
Oh, I can wordsmith it, I just want you to give me some marching orders.
Right, I think some of the, I I do think that some of the things that we said were, there's already so many um in the area, Route one and east. And then inland, it's less likely, but then if they wanted to have it, maybe some people wanted their kids to be limiting, and if you have already have a rural area that has so many, so much population in it, a potential if it has a small percentage, it's only gonna be a smaller potential of expansion, just see that small percentage of expansion there.
That's right.
And um so I think that was what we were looking at, that maybe it wasn't fair to to limit the ones in, just don't limit it, you know, on the western part of it and just limit it where we know the there's only a limited amount of space and the most likely places.
Yeah, and I think you even, I think you guys put your head together and said, any property, this is what I noted, any property five hundred feet west from west of Route one, east to Ocean,
Yeah.
from a Gunquit town line to the Kennybunk town line.
Right.
It's a tourist area.
Yes.
It's a tourist area. Um but did you, so I think we, there was a lot of vigorous nodding in that uh those sort of, that catchment area, so to speak. Um but what we didn't kind of drill down into is if, what caps, what they would look like? And um then the tiebreaker rules on how you allocate them, is it first come, first served, you know, but we can let's just try to figure out caps, if at all.
So We're we're putting caps on the tourist zone or on the rural?
I I was, I thought we weren't putting caps on the tourist zone, I thought
I thought it was a rural zone, I
Right.
It's a rural everything.
That makes sense to me, cause if we start putting the caps on the tourist zone, we're gonna push all my Airbnbs west.
I I would just say, no cap.
I'm looking for the ocean.
On the, on those perimeters that we we defined as the tourist area, so no caps at all on the tourist area or zone.
Yeah. Right.
And what about um for the more rural zones or the
I would, yeah, I the only problem I have is caps create a false value for those who have it and those who don't. You know, you know what I'm saying, no matter what, if you have a, if you live in a zone where um you can potentially have more of an of um short term rentals, um then maybe your your property would be slightly more valuable than an area that's already capped out and can't have anymore. And people might be interested in having something there to help them in their
Spoken as a prior assessor.
Yes, right, exactly, yeah, it was bad.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, it just automatically, the cap always creates a um
You know Kathy, that is a really interesting issue, cause I hadn't thought about it, because when you're thinking about, you know, how properties are being assessed, even under statute, it talks about the currently, I I'm sure I'm using the wrong words, but the currently available use or limitations on that use of that property. So I'm sure the assessors office is gonna be like, uh.
Oh, we already went, uh.
I know, that's true.
So you just, you just make it so that the license doesn't follow the property? Once it turns, if it changes hand, it's not an automatic granting of that license, that, you know, then it would open up and it's not creating that false value, because you're not guaranteed it if you buy that house.
Well, that's true, licenses are, I mean, it's unlike a planning board approval or building permit, right? That's, we were talking about the difference between licensing on one side and land use regulations on the other. It's a year or three years or however long you determine these licenses will last.
Or expires at the transfer of ownership.
Yes. Or a a period of X years or expires upon, yeah.
So so people build, say have it and it's worth a certain value, because they do have that income and now they can't sell it, because they can't sell it for that, because now you're saying that when the new people buy it, that goes away and they don't have that value. So they can't sell
We don't do income based assessing, though, we do property value and if the cost
You you don't have to do income, we don't do income based assessing either necessarily, but
That's what I'm saying.
that value is already built in there and if it was, it would be a selling point if you were selling it.
Yeah, but you wouldn't be, no, it wouldn't, because you would say that the license doesn't go with it, you're not guaranteed that license. It wouldn't factor in.
Right, but I'm saying, well, you're saying that now, but I'm saying that when they get ready, they would find a problem with the fact that they couldn't sell it for what they've been having the use for. You're taking away a use that you, that they have and now you're telling them if they sell it, you don't have that use anymore. That's a, that's a devaluation of what they have.
So if I sold you this pen and you wrote a check with it, does it make it worth more money just because it wrote a check?
No.
No, there there's no difference, and if you took note, the property is used as a single family dwelling, we grant a license that doesn't, isn't attached to that property. that doesn't, isn't attached to that property, that it's not, it's not factored into, I'm having a hard time understanding how it's factored into that value.
It's factored into that value, because if you were selling that property and 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 you were saying, okay, you know what, this is a great property, you can live here and you have two rentals that are right there that you can rent for whatever you want, and that will help you in your retirement and help pay for the mortgage that you have. And then they, then they say, because that's what we do and we have it, and so that's worth the value. But if you sell it and they can no longer do that, they can't have that income, and that impacts the value of what you're selling it for.
But the only thing they no longer can do, we un, right, we understand that the only thing they can no longer do is short-term rental, they could six-month rental it.
Right, but maybe short-term rentals is what they did in the summertime, and they didn't sell it in the wintertime.
There's nothing to preclude them from applying for a a license.
Well, if it's capped, it will.
Yeah, but they do with, like a license, and I'm not sure what your term of the license will be, right? But they do die a natural death every year or three years, whatever the term of the license is.
We have to renew them every year.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and maybe if the person doesn't want to have it, they don't renew it. And that's their option, though. But if they wanted to sell it with the like, you know, with the fact that they could be renewed every year, it would automatically be taken away. If you, if you said that on the, so if you, you couldn't renew it the next year, because you can't sell the practice of it with it.
But we we just.
Go ahead, Tim.
If we're not gonna cap it, then there's no sense in having a tourist zone in it.
Right.
I I mean, I, I support the cap in the area outside of, and I will say that unequivocally. And if we wanted to take a straw poll and put that one to bed, I mean, I'm just saying we do that.
I don't know what the cap is, but I would support some kind of cap.
I I would support some kind of cap, too.
Okay, so it sounds like the majority is a cap would apply to the non-tourist area, so wanna talk about?
We probably would have to look at how many different zone types do we have?
We have residential, A, B, is there a C?
C and D.
Yeah, C and D.
And rural.
Yeah, we have the beach business.
I'm sorry.
You have R C.
At some point in time, we're gonna have to go through the whole list.
But that beach business is on, if that's, that's already.
Well, no, because you you, we could just do on this side, saying that this is where our housing is.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And it's just this now, this this percentage or whatever, this many of allowed licenses for that, and we wouldn't have to get into the weeds on all that.
Okay.
We've just identified that area as, this is where our single-family dwellings are that are meant for long-term housing.
So you're not gonna do it zone by zone, it's either tourist or non-tourist area?
Mm-hmm.
And then.
There are two zones.
Pardon?
There are two zones, tourist and.
For the, for the purposes of this, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one zone is five hundred.
Tim, you just rezone the town.
Yeah.
The other one is five hundred feet.
Yeah, we're gonna have to clearly define the tourist area.
And I think we have, I've got some, I've got some lines here.
Well, we said five hundred feet.
Yeah.
West of one, right?
West of one, and now the, and the rest of it is all gonna be not.
So, I think, I I hear that caps are desired in the non-tourist area, so let's, let's refine that a little bit. And how you wanna determine that, and it can be, um, I don't know, population-based, it can be number of dwellings-based. You can decide a percentage of how many dwellings, and maybe it, if you're not going to parse it out district or zone by zone and just keep it in its totality, I think that does require some additional research, depending on how you wanna you know, or or you could do a percentage that.
Percentage of available housing stock seems to make the most sense to me, but I'm open to input on that.
Yeah, I I see a a a two-phase, uh, one is percentage of zoning stock and then percentage of a uh particular small area, we have to define what it is, but of a small area, say a development. You don't want eighteen of the twenty property, or 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 fifteen of the thirty properties in a development being eligible for short-term rentals. So maybe, maybe it's a percentage of.
Or or. That takes a lot of enforcement, though, if you think about that.
Exactly.
I understand, but.
But 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 another way.
Yeah, but if I only want those areas, I'd certainly be concerned about, uh.
Yeah, I hear that, Jim, um, and then the other things we were talking about is how to regulate, sort of, is it first come, first served? Is it a lottery, is it a allocation as geographically? Um, and thinking about administratively, how much burden that will be on staff or whomever is dealing with this. I don't know if it's an independent third-party vendor, but um I think when we make these determinations, we gotta think about that as well.
I think we can't, we can't do a lottery, because one year you have a license and then the next year you can't.
Yeah.
No, for lottery, be for, be for new available.
No, no, first.
Oh, okay, okay.
And again, that creates.
So how?
So so this is, this is interesting, 'cause I I I wasn't thinking all on these lines, it sounds like you're feeling like you get one, one year, then that is almost a guarantee you're gonna get it the next year.
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't thinking of it that way, I was thinking that every year is a new year.
Now that would be.
Unless, unless you choose not to get a license, then they would give it up.
No. And I'd be concerned about a taking, if somebody's invested in one, like, you know, Tim raised the point last time, and my opinion is we we shouldn't be looking at taking any from somebody that has one, whatever we set.
But I I I will push back a little, and I'm not, I don't care what you decide, I it's, it's the important thing is that we have the conversation, right? Is that, when it comes to that, I don't think that is a taking, a license, like, there's a taking if you get a a planning board approval and then the law changes, right, those planning board approvals run with the land. But a license is limited to its own terms, and there's no expectation, particularly if you say so in your ordinance, that you get one next year. It's it's a finite term, um, so I don't think there is a taking, so.
My subjective viewpoint is to ta, it would represent a taking in my eyes, because if somebody's invested in it and that was their hope too, and it's wired to all this,
Fair enough.
and I don't think that would be fair.
Totally understand that, and that's a policy decision, yeah.
I feel, so.
I agree with you on that, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so we're talking about existing. When John says that, I thought, no, so so like, so if if I'm, if in my house right now, I'm running a short-term rental. And I live west of the Turnpike, or west of the tourist zone, and I've been doing this for years, we're not gonna take that away from it. But if you're new.
Well, I think you've made a determination that grandfathering, you're you're, they're eligible for licenses.
Right, so you're, what you're saying is new licenses, or no?
Well, let's be clear, I think that everybody, whether they're grandfathered or not, has to get a license, right?
New, right, new, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said license, new.
Non-grandfather, right.
New, new buildings, new ADU, is that what you're only talking about, new, or you're saying?
Yep.
Right.
I think we're talking about beyond the, uh, beyond the cap, whatever the cap is.
Well.
Right, because if if the, there's you know, let's, let's say we can't set the cap at some percentage, and uh and only eighty percent of the people, oh oh, there's only eighty percent utilized.
Yeah.
So it's still another twenty percent to go, so really no issue. The problem is, is when we get, we set a a cap at some percentage, and then we've reached the maximum, then what happens?
The development's value.
Yeah, who who is eligible?
Yeah.
For the next one, is it a lottery, is it a?
And that's the question I'm probably.
Is it a waiting list?
Yeah.
Did we ever find out? I mean, I guess when we set a cap, I'd wanna know, how many, I don't know of a lot of short-term rentals west of the Turnpike. They're not saying they don't happen, I'm not, I'm not, I know there's some, but how many, like, how are we talking?
That's the data that I think this third-party actually kind of tracks.
I see.
Yeah, they did, they, so they, what they did, because of the duplication or more of all the platforms,
We did, too much. Right.
they took a rough number of about a thousand, and took about twenty-five percent out of that, so seven-fifty-ish is what they were estimating, and I suspect it may be even a little bit higher. Uh, but they they, they were comfortable with about a seven-hundred-and-fifty number for short-term rentals in town.
In town, but not, not west of the turnpike, we don't, we can't break down.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, no, they didn't, they could parse that out, I think, to the west side.
Yeah. I think they can, yeah, they can parse it.
Yeah, but, like, that that'd be interesting.
I, that, that'd be an interesting number to have, because now you, you know, you're making all these rules based on
Just true.
maybe there's only ten percent of the people even utilizing that, you know what I mean, right?
No, ten percent would be high.
Right, right. I I would like.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I would like to just bring it back to our focus with safety issues.
Yeah.
I mean, really, I know everybody was worried about the housing, but the, um, with the short-term rentals, I mean, if there was a big demand for housing, short-term rentals will probably be gone, because people would want to rent for a longer period of time, for for either as much money or just as much money. But either way, not not on the, not on the tourist part of it, but I'm saying on on the inland, more rural areas. But we all, the, if you, for one thing, if you want to get people registered as a short-term rental and you want to be able to know where they are, who's in it, and you want to have them follow all these requirements, it, you can't have a lot, you can't have a hammer, uh, you know, the carrot someone just said earlier to you, you're gonna have the, the carrot, say.
Yeah, carrot is.
If, so if you say, if you were to, and I don't think, and not everybody who has a house right now, it has to be an owner occupied. But those are, those are other things that we can say, that if you have a short-term rental, the owner has to be living in one of, in the house, right? Isn't that ser, similar to the A D U?
No. No.
Why would we not say that?
Because somebody, you could, we already said that uh, somebody in LLC could buy a house and use it as an A.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, rather than go that route, because you're really trying to protect the people that live there
A as an.
from having the LLCs or whatever buy them. But if you tied that in, same as you would with the accessory dwelling unit, where you have to have the owner living in the house before, if they, if they have a short-term rental on their property, they could still have a short-term rental, and they could do that if they wanted to, and and that's the people that are, everybody who lives out there now um, who's not an LLC living there, which wouldn't happen, so say everybody that's living out there right now. I don't see any reason why we'd want to cap it, if if they choose to do it and we say, in an area, it would be the person that's living there that's actually gonna put the short-term rental in their property, the owner's gonna do it. And and I just think that at that point, if they want to do it, they come forward, they say, I want a license to do this, these are the requirements I'm complying with, these are the, these are the restrictions that I have, these are the safety factors that I have to follow, and they'll be willing to do it. But if you put a cap out there somewhere, and everyone knows that there's a cap and that they only have so much time and so much to actually even apply or look or apply for one, so they have a grandfather of it, then you're gonna have a whole different reason, you're giving them a reason to go out and do that, or create it now so they're grandfathered.
The issue becomes, though, and and I I I disagree with the assertion that it was only about safety, because I also had this uh issue in mind too, and I don't, I can't speak for everybody else, but I can say that wasn't.
Right, and I didn't mean only about safety, but the main reason we were doing it to begin with was safety.
Well, I mean, I, well, as far as my motivating factor is twofold, it was safety, but it was, there was, well, actually, I should say, there was actually a couple of reasons. And the way I've reconciled it to my mind, going through the reasons, you have a de facto cap on every type of business in town of of every regulated business in town, you have a de facto cap, period, it's through zoning, there's only so much space, it's been allotted. You look at G B, you look at R C, there's restrictions in R C on what you can actually do. This is the only business in town right now that can literally spread through the entire town. When I look at what the intent of rural and of these areas were, it was not, it granted, in rural, there are things like sawmills or something that fits in a rural feel, but they can spread throughout the single-family dwellings in town unfettered. Now, is that a realistic problem in the short term? Maybe not, but again, I think it's our job to contemplate, if there were a run on them, would we want to see the town get up to twenty, thirty, forty percent of available housing stock going into short-term rentals? I understand right now that we're not anywhere near that, but if we don't do anything and something were to happen, if the area became highly desirable within forty or fifty years, right? So none of us are sitting here, if we don't set the systems in place to prevent it, then it's gonna be a problem, and I guess my argument to that is, if it's not a problem, then why is it a problem to cap it? If it's not a problem right now, we could set it, if it was seven-hundred-and-fifty for the whole town and say there was ten thousand houses, that under ten, seven and a half percent available housing stock in town right now, if we set a number of twelve percent, maybe there is a run, but that's it, that's all that's allowed, it's done after that. There is no more worrying about it after that, it's done.
I think that makes sense to me, I think that's a a reasonable way to do it.
I just think we need to get ahead of it, because it's happened in other places in the country, it's happened other places globally. It's not like it's unfounded to think this, there's other examples that we can look at where it has happened. And I don't think we're doing future generations a favor if we just let the houses get bought up for businesses. Short of that, we can just remove home business licensing and let every business in town go after every single-family dwelling, I mean, right, same thing.
Okay.
It's the same thing.
Um, I I, yeah, go ahead.
I I, I also struggle, my bigger struggle, my struggle all the time has been safety, I, that that has been, I I would agree with it, my number one. My number two is a little different than John's, my number two has been the lifestyle of of the people that live in these neighborhoods. I I've been big on that, I've been, I, I do not want, I live, I lived on Wells Beach for most of my life.
Followed that.
And when I grew up on Wells Beach, it was a different beach, right, so now it's, now it's become short-term rentals, and to tell you, it's a, it's a pain in the neck sometimes when I, when I'm down on the beach and the guy next to me is doing whatever he's doing, and I do the same thing when I go rent somewhere in Florida, so you know, I'm I'm that person sometimes. So what I'm saying to you is, I'm now have my home that I'm living in in a development, I'm not in a, but nearer development, and the guy on each side of me, if this were to happen, these short-term rentals come in and every weekend, there's a new guy having a a a party here, or this is going on here, and now my lifestyle has to change in my home that I built in this town in Wells, because we're allowing people to rent out like this. I I struggle with that, I, that's one of my strong feelings on this, is I don't, I don't want it in the, those residential areas as much. I'd I'd like to see it less in those, I'm talking short-term, if somebody wants to rent their house for six months, I don't, I'm not, I can't say a word to that. And if those people are parties, it's on me, you know, I mean, I can figure out why, why that happened, but when you're talking weekends or a few days or whatever it is, I I I struggle with it, I do, and I, I, especially in developments and and homes, so these people at homes, I mean, we can all say, no, that's not true, and I have a buddy that it happens to every weekend, and it, he's selling his house because of what happened to him. He wants to live in Wells, but he can't, and that sucks.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, I'm with you on that, Tim, uh, the quality of life in the existing neighborhoods should not be affected by short-term rentals.
Yeah, we wanna see.
And to be honest, I'm not changing it because he's on Route One, so he doesn't, this this rule doesn't help him, but I, you know what I mean, but it could happen to someone on Bald Hill Road, or where, you know what I mean, and, or wherever, I just, that part I do struggle with.
My approach to this is the, um, like, I've seen a lot of people, like, I went to school with and stuff, have to be, they have to leave Wells and go to like cheaper places, and we have a lot of like employees that work, like, they live in Springville, 'cause it's cheaper and they have to commute all the way in here, right, so it's hard to look at those situations and then see you know, moderately wealthy people being able to buy income properties, like multiple houses that are just for business, you know, and then I think that's genuinely pushing out a lot of talent from the town, I think we're losing people.
So where are we on caps?
Oh, good question.
So, hearing what you're saying, Tim, and others about lifestyle, are we still solid on no cap in the beach area?
Yeah, I I was fine, I I'm fine with that, it's a tourist area, it's been already got it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the, then we're considering caps or no caps in the other zone, the non-tourist zone, and whether or not you think it's appropriate, and if so, how to ascertain what that will be?
What I think.
So, could listen, you could, if you had one, um, no one could own more than three properties? Or no one, or, but then again, you're saying before we talked, they could change their name and whatever.
I think there is, we were, we were talking about limitation on number of licenses, but to me, I think we need to figure out if there are gonna be caps first, and if so, how to determine.
Well, they did, we already took that, we.
Yeah.
Well, what they are then?
I think it, so what I would think we would have to do is we'd have to have a rough estimate on the amount of short-term rentals in town, try to use A I to extrapolate that data to west of.
In town or just in that area?
Well, get get the, yeah, get.
West of.
Yeah, because I actually think we don't have to extrapolate, I remember a visual, they show pinpoint literally where they all are, yeah.
Just west.
Right.
We can show.
Well, perfect, get that number and then compare it to the available housing stock in that area, and then that's gonna give you a rough estimate, go a little over, leave a little wiggle room and set a percentage. And then as housing inventory grows, so won't those licenses become available, but we could keep track of that.
That's a smart way to do it, John.
Mm-hmm.
Kathy, I also, I I like your, I like that idea to do a, um, I I I think that's, it makes sense to ma, to have a limit on how many licenses one company or one individual can have.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, because you don't want one entity being able to, you know, however we allocate the licenses, you wouldn't want it to be unfair, like lopsided to one, one group.
Great segue, that was my next question to have you talk about.
So, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but before we get away from the cap, so we have an overall cap on the number out of the the tourist area. But then, to deal with the quality of life issue, there should be either some distance or, um, some kind of cap, so that someone like your friend doesn't have one on each side of a.
Like a distance from each other, like?
Yeah, di- distance from each other.
I know in like some cities, they have it where you can't have more than one on a street, like, but that's more like if it's a block, we don't really have blocks in in town, you know?
Yeah.
Hmm. That's a tough.
Didn't we write a nuisance ordinance a while ago because it's something like this?
Yeah, we, just if they, and why don't we, why don't we, if we have a nuisance law license, do we, do we actually pass it?
Yeah, we, yeah, we did.
We did, that's what I thought, so why don't we just enforce that? If that's the case.
You could tie that into.
Yeah.
You could, you did.
How do you do that?
You'd have a cap on the number of licenses west of the Turnpike, you'd still have to have a business license, you could. You'd have a cap on the number of licenses west of the turnpike, you'd still have to have a business license, you could have loss of business license if you violated that.
Right.
If you violated that nuisance ordinance too many time. Just as an idea, just throwing it out there.
That makes sense.
You still, once you have a business license, there's some incentive to make sure that the people that are renting there are doing the right thing.
Right. Right, I I agree, if there's if there's so many issues with it, then maybe that impacts the ability to have a license or something, or they get suspended.
And those are things that I would build into uh revocation because I know you wanted revocation provisions. And in fact, they're already there.
Well, not revocation, not necessarily revocation, failure to renew.
Well, suspension, revocation or failure to renew, yeah. Um and those are already built baked into your licensing provisions, you've used them in the past if you recall.
Mm-hmm.
So but um you know, we could make sure that that's front and center.
I think on dub doubling up on John's, the nuisance, you you could. In the a lot of the Airbnbs I've rented. It in the right when you're renting it, it says, hey, just basically it's a heads up, look, this is a rural neighborhood. We don't allow party, you know, you can't do this, there there's like a lot of like we don't allow this period, like there is a a I I guess a guideline, I don't even know what.
Yeah, we talked about that, in fact, I remember you said you you don't want that, but now it sounds like we're revisiting that, which is fine, that's to- that's what this process is, it's an iterative process, right?
Right. Or renting. Yeah.
That um there were kind of, you know, good neighbor standards that are every post. You didn't want them to have that was sort of suggested, but um you know, maybe we can, I don't know if we want, and this is entirely up to you. That if we want to draft a sample one. Um but you might, I don't know if you wanna acquire it, I don't know if you wanna suggest it, I don't know how deep into the regulatory weeds you wanna go.
I think that you you know that there should be a notice if there is that more than that there would be a problem if there's more than twice that has to be. That if it comes two two times to that place, then the owner will be notified that they won't be. You know, to give to give them heads up and the note and if that's the case, the owner should be encouraged at that point to give a guide. You know, a guide on what is a acceptable and not acceptable. But the fact that they're just you know, they know that they're renting to this and they should, I mean if I was renting and I said to the people, if you if there's a problem here. And you party too loud and there and somebody comes makes a complaint and somebody comes here. Um that that is an impact on you'll have to leave immediately and that you know, you know, whatever you can do, but I think. Whatever if it's a guideline on whether we're saying that it's a good neighbor policy or. Also put with it what their end result would be if they abuse it, it has to be both. Do you do you know what I'm saying?
I do, I think it's problematic for a couple of reasons, one.
Yeah.
Um just because you get a complaint, you could have the most eggshell. You know, sensitive neighbor that your dog barked once and they call the police, you know, and so there's. Due process involved in that and that's why there would have to be, if you're gonna revoke somebody's license or not renew it, you have to have those conversations.
Right.
Um but also, again, I don't. I I haven't gone down this far into regulations and I haven't seen them go this far that like you have to require the. Owner to kick somebody out, like I haven't seen that, I think that's. Could be problematic.
If you just put teeth into the licensing provision and couple it with our nuisance ordinance, you're Jody's gonna find out or whoever's gonna.
Yeah, I mean.
Gonna find out quick enough where these problems are, as long as you have an apparatus.
Exactly. Exactly.
To deal with it, I think.
Right.
And that's where the enforcement provisions, the suspension, revocation.
Right.
Um that's where I think we wanna incentivize the owners to actually keep an eye on what's going on at their property.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, there's you know, applying the nuisance law that we already have in existence to it.
Yeah.
And then the thing with the licensing is. If we found there was a problem and there was some idea, you know, we always get these one offs or whatever that we didn't think of. You can always revisit that license after the fact, if you wanna tie these provisions to it.
Yes, definitely.
We just have to get started.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um so it sounds like yes, cap, it's going to be determined by. Comparing an estimate of how many short term rentals are in that particular area. As against the housing stock, which I would imagine is the job for the assessor to tell us essentially how many. Properties or dwellings are in that area and then we set a percentage of that once you get a sense of what that is, right?
Would that change as the housing stock increases to three percent?
It does, yeah, so we'd have to revisit that annually, I think annually you'd have to revisit that.
Yeah.
Do we want that, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
To me it does, I mean if you say that certain amounts.
Certain percentage.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean actually you don't have to change the percentage, it's just that the data will change, right?
Right, if there's more, there's gonna hire. Hire a number, but the percentage would still be the same.
And when we're when we're talking about the denominator, I think we're talking about properties, not units.
Well, that was another question, you were deciding whether you're gonna rent entire pro- only allow an entire property to be rented. Um when I say property, I mean a dwelling, a dwelling, so say there's two dwellings on a two houses on a lot. Um that's one thing, but you were talking about like renting, do you wanna prohibit renting rooms within? Means say somebody owns like ten old, you know, family mansion on the water and they wanna rent out individual rooms. Some were saying, no, no, we don't want that, we want it to be, you know, one. Only the whole the whole house or the whole dwelling. Ver- and and if you do rent rooms, then you have to think about having individual locks and everything and I think you were. Reluctant to go that deep into the regulatory weeds, but maybe my recollection is.
So what does this? What if you had, I mean where this would apply would be like an apartment or a condo or something like that, I guess this would suck.
No, no, like say you have an old family house that has ten bedrooms and you wanna rent.
Near one. Right. But Jim's asking about housing units as opposed to actual properties, is that what you were?
Alright, alright.
Are you, is that what you're asking though, are you talking about like you have one building with three?
I'm I'm trying to. So when we set a percent a percentage, I'm I'm wondering what the denominator is.
Right.
Yeah, okay, that's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, is the denominator properties or um housing units?
Well, what are we, so if you right now under what we've discussed, if you hypothetically you had a condo like the ones that Casper Zach built, you have one building with like three or four units in it. Can one of those units be bought in short term rental if there's no covenants that are in the condo docks prohibiting it?
I would think so.
We haven't answered that question, I don't think, but.
I would think.
I think whatever the metric is, it should be tied to that, that way it's it's one for one.
Right.
So that that would be units, that um just just dwelling.
Yeah.
Still places for people to live, it's still available stock.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm, your housing stock basically, that's what we're talking about.
That makes sense, cuz then you can cover things like duplexes too.
Right.
So in that situation, right, when you have a big mansion and you've got multiple rooms, that's more of like a classic. What I think of when I think of like a like a bed and breakfast, right? Do we have a license type for that, okay, so that's covered already, right?
Yes, totally do. Yes. Well, not necessarily because ar- arguably that's the whole point, like. I'm sure folks who are in the lodging business will say, well, this is the same thing as a hotel or motel, as opposed to.
Hmm.
Renting out one room, short term rental is the same thing as a bed and breakfast, so I think. You know.
Yeah, but how many mansions are we gonna have in town that that's gonna apply to?
Or don't they don't have to be, I mean when I do my Airbnb thing. You look for New York or something, I mean there's some stuff that you don't necessarily want to be renting.
Right, there's there's a site that can go to rent a couch, but all you're renting is a couch.
But it doesn't have to be ten, it could be five bedrooms that people wanna, you know, and they wanna.
But I I I think that my question that I'm posing is, do you want to limit it to dwelling units, which are defined as. You know, basically room, kitchen, bedroom or.
No, dwelling units, in other words. Uh if I have two hu- two housing properties on my property, that's two.
I still think you can rent those out, I'm talking about simple bedrooms within a dwelling unit.
I I if 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 you're gonna get into uh renting each individual bedroom as a short term rental.
Yeah. Yes.
I would think we should require that you be a bed and breakfast.
I mean.
Just to be consistent.
So let me understand. You're asking in terms of the cap, if there was basically like an in-law apartment within a house, is that what you're asking? No, okay.
One of the questions here is, do you want to allow the short term rental of individual rooms? Or not, it's really simple, like.
No.
Okay, this is one of the really simple ones and we haven't answered that question.
No. I would say no.
Okay, that's easy.
I would say no, I don't know what you would say. But I don't have a problem if they take a five bedroom house and make four bedrooms. They make a bed and breakfast out of it and serve breakfast.
That's a different, that's a totally different follow-up, yeah.
That's consistent with. Right.
Bed and breakfast need a site plan and they need to be approved under zoning, it has to be an approved use under our zoning, so there's already again a de facto limitation on that.
Right.
Right. But individual bedrooms, no.
I'd go with you then, Jim, no, that makes sense.
Okay. Okay, so what we also have not answered is limitations, as Avery was saying, limitations on. Numbers of licenses that can be obtained per individual or company or related entity, we'll figure out a way to try to. Address the, you know, game of setting up different LLCs, but.
I I think where I'm coming from, I I have absolutely no problem if somebody wants to have like have an Airbnb, right? And make some extra extra money, you know, but. I think we get into real issues if people are intentionally buying up. Two, three, four extra houses and then running it like a corporate business, you know? I think for me, I I I'm totally cool with having one Airbnb per person and then nothing uh nothing more.
Per person.
Yeah, like so you're an entity, right, you're whatever person, whatever you decide to say, like each. Person, each entity is allowed to have one license to run an Airbnb. But no more than that, if you have more than that many properties, you can do them long term. But uh I I think I think it's. I'll 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 having people running five or six Airbnbs in town is uh. It's more like at that point, right? You have an incredible amount of money that you're able to buy that many properties to begin with, so I don't understand. Why you need that kinda income on top of that, if that makes sense.
Let me. I guess that's America, I mean I I as capitalism, I I mean. I don't dictate whether, I don't have a lot of money, but I don't dictate whether John has a lot of money or or this guy has, I I just. I s- I struggle with us saying. You can't do that, I I I I don't know, capitalism is capitalism and I wish I.
Yeah.
So. So let's take a different extreme, uh Avery says one, what if somebody wanted to have fifty?
I I mean, I do I like it, no, but I don't know, I don't know that.
So if one of the problems who we're trying to address is the taking housing stock.
I I struggle with.
Permanent housing stock out of mark market, that would be one way to address that, by putting some kind of limitation on.
I I agree.
I don't know that one is the number.
I think our cap does that right now, my concern.
I think three would be good for per individual.
I could go with three.
I just don't. I don't know how. I mean the 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 licensing thing's gonna be a heavy lift to start in terms of getting the licensing and then if we have a cap, how those are administered, that's gonna be a heavy lift. If we get that far into the weeds, I'm concerned that initially you're gonna it's 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 gonna be very difficult, you're gonna have LLCs. I know and I don't know every state's LLC laws, but I know some of them, you can't even tell who was in charge of it, you're gonna have trusts, you're gonna have, I mean you're a lawyer, right?
Right.
Yeah, and that's absolutely true, but it is also true that you can have on the application, are you an a principal or manager of another LLC that has also made an application, there's.
It just how how are you gonna, how are you gonna check on that, what's the enforcement method gonna be if you find it?
That's the same question for everything we're talking about.
I know, I know, but with and I guess what I'm looking at is right, I understand a lot of this is probably gonna be difficult or it's gonna be complaint driven. But in my mind, we need to sort of look at the practicality of it and then what we're actually trying to accomplish, I guess in my mind, if we're trying to protect the amount of housing stock. Whether one person owns all of them or a hundred different people own them. It's still we're protecting our goal of protecting the certain amount of housing stock, again, it doesn't necessarily mean I like the idea of somebody having every license in town. But I still think if we deem that number appropriate for this is what we need for housing, we've protected it, at least we've accomplished that much.
Yeah, but but then again, is it fair for one person to uh make us hit the cap? And a lot of other uh people that own properties wanted to do it and can't because one person monopolized.
No, I don't I don't, I mean I don't think that that's necessarily fair, no, but again, can we accomplish it?
Um by the self-reporting?
Yeah, because if remember, one of the great things that you had is in the application, you're gonna have them. Self-report a whole bunch of different data, that can be a data point.
So they can lie, they can they can lie.
Right, of course, they can lie about any of those data points.
Yeah, they can lie, but if they get caught, then the stick comes in, what's the fine?
What's, so what would you envision and not, you know?
Well, I don't know.
And again, I'm not I'm not arguing with you on your idea, I'm I'm just trying to drill down on what we all think, if that was caught, what's inappropriate? Because we've had problems with licensing before and then it's like, nope, we can't do this, no, can't do that.
So so I think we have a and I like there's so many not easy answers, I think we have an easy answer to that question and that is we've. I think we've already decided we're gonna tie it to the state um penalties for violations of ordinances, which is daily between. Hundred to twenty five hundred or five thousand depending on the nature, I don't think we need to worry about that.
But I think I think I think you need to at least enumerate what that's gonna be within the language, because if it get if it's vague. Then somebody's gonna go in front of a judge, they're gonna say.
It it's not vague, that's one thing I will say and I say things are vague all the time, that statute is not vague.
A monetary amount, if it's if you're given a range, pick a monetary amount that it's gonna be.
Oh, I don't think that benefits us, I think we, no, because we wanna go to court and be able to argue.
No, really, okay.
The guy who had fifteen parties shouldn't be penalized the same amount as the guy who forgot to pay his registration fee. So so what I am saying is and the reason I say this, John, is because I live in that world all the time. Those things, the ranges are very clear and it benefits us to say when something's particularly egregious, go for more, you know.
Well, terms, but but that's what I was saying though, is make sure that we can get the more, not have it and I I trust you, I'm not questioning you.
Here's my struggle with the i- the whole idea, and this is more philosophical, but my struggle with this idea of limiting this to this whatever, right? And we're doing this to create housing, so that your friends and my kids and your kids can live in this town. I've said this before, we're doing it blindly, I'm sorry. It's not happening unless we're willing to take a step back and say, hey, we need apartment buildings, we need this. We're not creating affordable housing by doing this, we're just limiting what we're not, we're not creating, you're creating more five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollar homes, that's all you're doing. That we're not creating that, we need to take a step and look at what we're doing, if that's what we want in this town. If we want people to be able to live in this town, we've gotta step way back from this, it's not gonna be done on this, it's not.
No.
And I have no illusions of that, I just look at it as a multifaceted problem.
Right, I know, but but part of the reason why some of us are doing this is because people have stated they were trying to protect the housing for the people. I agree with you, if we had overlay districts that allowed apartment buildings, for instance. Um that's really what, that's about the only way to be able to have affordable housing here.
Yes.
Um in Wells.
Well, you're gonna be getting it.
But you can't but and you gotta and at that point, they have to be absolutely restricted, they should be restricted from ever having it be. You know, anything other than um a dwelling units, I mean.
Right, right.
I think one of the questions that I don't know if was here, it was probably in that big book um that I actually read, which I thought was interesting, is the number of the capping. So the limits on the the same person can have the same the license isn't so much about, it it was more in the sense of, okay. If some multinational company comes and buys all of them versus, hey. I wanna make a little bit of extra income on my property and if somebody else comes and buys all of them as opposed to the locals who are trying to get some. You know, extra income to pay the property taxes, I think that was also part of the the nature of the question.
Right.
That makes sense, it it's just another example of how everything is skewed to people that already have money, right? Like if you have money to buy five, ten houses and rent them all out as Airbnbs. Like you're gonna be fine if we say you 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 have to rent these out long term right now. Or you can sell them and make like way above what they're worth right now, cuz the market is insane. Like we're not genuinely hurting these rich people by saying you you have to have a limited number of licenses, it's. They're gonna be all right, it's gonna be okay.
If you don't limit the number of licenses to cer- uh an individual or an individual entity like that.
Mm-hmm.
And someone does come in and start buying up everything, that means the value, a- again, it create a value of those for those licenses. Because there's a cap on it, there's only so many licenses where I you know, it it creates this market for buying the licenses, so somebody. Say, I don't know, it just it just, I I I think that having a cap um only having one entity own so many is. I I I think that having a cap, um only having one entity own so many is is at least one way of doing it.
So you like the idea too?
Of what?
Of having it, the the entity limited to the number?
Yeah, you know, that's what, and and if they wanna check off that they, that know they don't own another one in LLC and they get caught up that.
That's an enforcement issue.
That's another, that's another.
And that is the ability to, say they do own five, to not renew any of those five, right?
And on the second note, if you want to limit it so that there aren't big entities coming in, limit it to three. So, I mean, they're not gonna, they're not gonna come in and and for three, three.
Three grandfather. Grandfather, if somebody happens to have five now, they're okay.
Yeah.
They're okay.
They're okay, but any new license, any new from this point on anyway, it should be new.
Yeah, yeah.
Without taking home, so.
Yeah.
Um, uh um, they can have three.
And what was the number, did I hear three, five, do I hear three?
Three.
It's far too high, I think.
No, three, three is.
I think one or two, I'd go for three.
No, three, three is good. Three, but um, but I think anymore than that, you're, then then it might get worthwhile to buy four.
Yeah. That's not true.
You know, when you can, if you know, if you just.
And and so.
Unless grandfather, yeah.
And if you design the application uh in a format that shows the penalties for not com- for non-compliance, and somebody doesn't comply and they look at, oh, this could cost, cost me thousands or ten thousand, tens of thousands of dollars, here's the deterrent.
One of the words that was used was three per individual?
Yeah, three per individual. I I'll try to figure out a way to to capture the.
Because what if it was a husband and wife?
The people, the daughters and readers.
Well, Tom said, I just give the other three to my wife and my son too.
I get it. I get it.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I will figure out that language.
Yeah.
I'd still do that. I mean, you can't stop my son from buying three, you can't stop my, so it's really not gonna change it.
No, can't stop, no. Individual, just an individual, or an individual entity.
Individual or spouses.
No, individual, no, individual, he wants to buy, if I.
I mean. You get set in. You have the idea.
Then I, then I say the numbers two.
Alright, let me just draft something and you guys can debate it when it comes before you, okay?
Okay.
Right.
Um, uh, okay, the grandfathering issue. Wanna touch on that? We know that anybody who has had one of these before is grandfathered for a license, okay? The evidence, here's the question, do you want them to say, and you have to show uh an agreement or a rental on Airbnb or um, you know, a check, or do you wanna say an affidavit suffices? Like, how do you want to, again, we don't need to go too far into the weeds, but how are you envisioning this proof of grandfathering? Because, you know, if they don't have.
They have to provide some kind of evidence that they've been doing this.
Right, what kind Jim, is what I'm saying.
Everything all public.
Yeah, I mean, do you, or if they don't have anything, they could say, is an affidavit sufficient? Like, that's what I wanna ask.
They control, they control us their, their, their listeners. Yeah, I I think an affidavit is with um penalties if they lie.
Okay.
How would they not have a tax return at very least stating rental income?
Cuz maybe they're not reg- registering the income.
But that's.
The thinking being.
Well.
Yeah, but that's.
Yeah, well, if they, if, if we ask them to prove, and then we'll say, okay, well, uh, show us your schedule E, your rental schedule on your tax.
You can't have both ways, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's easy.
Yeah, it's easy. And if they don't show it, they weren't doing it legally, so shame on them. They don't get grandfathered.
Okay. Well. I say, if they, if they suddenly come forward and say, I wanna apply and I've I've been grandfathered for it, and I wanna get the license now, um I say, give them a license. You know.
You know, I can use uh sufficiently broad language that gives you some discretion there, alright. Um, I just didn't know if you were really wanting to hold people's feet to the fire and to show actual evidence, or just in a test, I affirm, I swear, you know.
I think the nature of what is going on now would be that they may not have
firm evidence. That's fine, we'll, we can cross that bridge. Um, another really important issue is one I think Jimmy you had raised was, okay, what if we, you know, there may very well be in the non-tourist zone, lots of capacity, depending on what, you know, the the formulas we come up with. But what if five years from now, we get to that sweet spot where, okay, the amount of licenses available, more people want it than there are licenses available, how do you determine eligibility? And that was back to the first come, first serve, the lottery, the, you know, I I don't know how you wanna do that, but that's one of those issues they want you to address in an ordinance.
What, you want us to address it now?
You know, perhaps.
Give me some, some little bit of guidance, just a nugget, you know.
Good silence here.
Uh, I think the lottery is a fairest.
I think it, I think it is too, because uh if you put a waiting list, I, you know.
Yeah.
I'll get a buck, let me buy your spot.
You could get on the waiting list to stop somebody else from getting the license.
Yeah, yeah, or they say somebody, I'll give you money to get your spot.
Yeah, right, it will.
And have you get it too.
So not first come, first served, yes.
That's been done around here before, hasn't it, yeah.
Yeah, because I think you had mentioned before, the first come, first serve like creates a rush to the, yeah, okay, and that taxes staff.
Yeah.
So, and the, and the lottery would care, you'd get your license and it would carry over for however long you want.
Well, that's great. Segue, what's your license term? How do you want, how long do you want these licenses to be?
No. Each, each term. It it each year or it's a new lottery?
For years, a year, two year?
It should be annual, every, all the other places that rent are annual.
Make, yeah.
So we would have a a lottery every year for?
Yeah, people would put an application in for the lottery and.
Because you'd only have it.
Only for ones that didn't meet the cap, right? You're talking, is that what you're talking?
Yeah, yeah.
So if there's a waiting list.
Right.
If cap opens up, you go to the lottery. That's how it's working.
Exactly, yeah.
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 Okay, okay, okay.
If if you, if we agree.
Right, so.
If the number exceeds the cap, yeah.
If the limit, and then somebody uh stops doing it, and there's one one available, um, you spend the wheel.
If you're.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Can we make a fun wheel?
Yeah, we're good.
Little pictures of houses all the way around.
Uh, okay, I think.
And in order to, uh, you have to have an application in that year for the.
Yeah, so you have deadlines, right? I think for other licenses, it's by April one or May first or something. I'll I'll make sure it's tied to those things.
And and if they do have to, they would have to show proof that they actually have a unit that they're renting, that they're going to be renting at that point, they're not building one cuz they get one.
Oh gosh, that's a good idea, you know what I mean? Oh my god, do we really wanna go that far?
No, I think in order for them to do it, they have like twen- they have two weeks or whatever to show what unit it is and show, I mean, I think they, I think they should show proof of a unit before they, um, before we give it to, cuz somebody else who has a unit already, I.
Right, you have to have an occupancy permit before it's granted.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, interesting.
Mm-huh.
Makes sense.
Great. Okay, and the only other outstanding issue, I'm sure there will be many more, but just to get me started, is um the, there was something about, should there be hosting platform regulations? Meaning, we tell Airbnb or, you know, and I know Mike, we talked about, maybe you would look into that, like, this is where it came up, safety, safety, back to the first principles, right? About making sure they keep records of renters and contacts and emergency contacts, God forbid there's something. Um, is the onus only on the owner to do that? And that's part of the registrate, that application saying, I swear, I swear, and this is part of the application process? Or there was some thought, I think, and maybe I missed it, was about, um, should there be hosting platform regulations? Meaning, the town says, hey, if you wanna do stuff in our town, you have to do X, Y, and Z. And I I don't, I can't even really get my head around how we would do that, but.
I think that would be a possibility.
I think so too. But that was one of the issues that was raised, and I have no idea how that would actually happen, because there's so many of them now.
Right.
Yeah, hosting platform. In the book, it's uh page one seventy, hosting platforms.
So if, right, if the, if the person was to to go put their unit or whatever they're renting out on any entity out there, they have to include a, just a little tag that says, um, in in compliance with town of Wells um laws. I mean, would that be unreasonable to to say that to them? That way they're taking care of it, no?
I don't, I just don't know how all these platforms work, and I think that may have been the nature of the question.
Right, but I think also, we talked about this third-party group, and that is something that they oversee the regulation if you choose to do that.
Yes.
And so they would ensure that it's compliant with what you come up with for an ordinance.
Right.
And so that would be the hosting platform, what, regardless of which one they may use, that they're attesting that they're in compliance with your requirements.
Okay.
But can that be uploaded, for lack of a better word, to every one of these hosting sites?
I can't imagine these companies will do all this.
So many of them.
Right, so I just feel like that's an unreasonable, or I shouldn't say it's unreasonable, it's just administratively, I don't know how you get to do that.
Well, I think it's un.
Be a nightmare, scrap it.
Okay.
Yeah, that that one, I'm just thinking.
But on their, on their own application.
Right.
They have to attest.
It has to be there.
Okay. Got it. Thank you for your time, folks. This has been interesting.
Thank you.
Alright, we can.
Should be able to craft that this week.
Absolutely, I'll get it to you tomorrow, tomorrow.
I mean, we'll, we gotta get in the weeds once we read them.
We can see it.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, there are so many weeds.
Yes. Uh, alright, we'll move on to our next workshop, uh workshop on lodging fees.
Yeah, and it's supportive, remember, um during the budget process and um in concert during reconciliation and discussion with the uh budget uh committee, I'll use that term, um you had agreed that you would look at lodging fees. One of the requ- uh requests that you had was that, let's see, my leg will be very happy after falling asleep here.
Well, that's that's, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. It was that we take a deep dive, um if we could, into calls for services, some of the respective
Okay.
um campgrounds and hotels, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
Uh, I wanna credit Aaron Stewart at the Police Department Dispatch for compiling this data.
Wow.
Um, it it is what it, it is what it is, um, but he took every single location from January of twenty-two and carried it out to, I think, twenty-four. Um, to give you the number of calls for service that came up from each of the respective establishments, and those are hotels, motels, and campgrounds. Um, you'd asked for that data and and Aaron did a great job compiling that.
Then the other question is, what what's the total cost per service in those respective periods?
With regard to, um, public, public safety overall.
With regard, in other. Yeah.
I believe, and I I don't have that full number, but I think dispatch would talk, you may have somewhere in the, I think police would come out somewhere over the thirty, thirty-five thousand mark.
Because what we're trying to. Okay, so the the thing that we're trying to return, is there an additional cost to the community because of this? And.
I think that's really hard, it's a moving, it's a moving number. We don't know. Uh, do folks that come and stay in these establishments generate need for public safety? Of course they do.
Sure.
Uh, do those that come in short-term rentals, whatever they may be, of course they do. And then are you around residents and how how you make that correlation, I'm not really sure.
Well, I, I question would be, who do we hire for the, for the summer because of the extra people that we have here? Do we have an expansion of of of, um, police? Do we have an ex- we have the lifeguards, of course.
Sure, we have, we have those services.
We have the, you know, those services that are applied only during those time, and I know that people that live here go to the beach, so they would also use a lifeguard, but
Of course.
But still, um, but other than that, um.
We have additional uh police personnel, um we have personnel that monitor our parking lots.
Yeah. Right.
Um, the lifeguards, as you point out, what, what the percentage of impact folks that are coming here as visitors create, I I really don't even know how to quantify that. Um, do they put a a stress on your infrastructure? Of course they do. Um, to what level? I don't know.
So if if our year-round population is what, thirteen thousand?
We could call it twelve to thirteen and we would suggest forty to forty-five thousand in the summer, Eleanor.
Our.
That's what I hear that number a lot.
So, the, then the second question is, what is, what are the numbers of of personnel in our emergency departments? Based on the thirteen thousand or the forty-five or fifty thousand?
True.
And if it's the forty-five or fifty thousand, then it's clear that the summer residents, um, that that the, that the full-time residents are are paying an un- uh a much smaller burden, a much higher burden to cover the protective services you're on.
Right.
So.
And I don't think I have it with me, but I can certainly get the information as we look at the seasonality of calls for service.
The reason I said that, um, Kathy, is because it's the, it's not that we're hiring additional people in the summer. We have to maintain the fire, police, and ambulance people based on what the
With the highest, oh, yeah, at the highest, yeah, of course you do, but, yeah, but um.
The highest population, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We we have data that will show January through December and what the seasonality of the calls for service look like. And certainly there is an increase as we raise the the population, the correlation is, it rises. Um, is it significant? Not as much as you might think, and we can get, I'll have those numbers for you.
We will. These total calls are obviously by the month right here.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around, they got one thousand nine hundred and twenty-one calls total, just in January of twenty-two. When I go into, go into June, it's up five hundred, which that's when your tour season's starting to pick up. And it goes up a thousand calls in July.
And it makes sense that August would be the highest.
Right.
And February is the lowest, cuz everybody's in Florida.
But, you know, the interesting thing is too, there's a lot of, a lot of houses in town, people don't even occupy them, they just head out, you can't attribute that to lodging. So that's, that's the difficult metric to capture too, is.
Let's look at this.
Well, this one in twenty-four is pretty interesting, January two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six, then you jump down to June, lower. Goes up by five hundred calls for July, and then it's actually only twenty, or not even twenty calls higher in August.
Yeah, there could be storms in January.
That is.
Right. Two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, that's, we had all those uh.
Storms, with the bees, and all that, you don't can't really.
That's right.
Three winters storms.
I get, I get, and I don't have the the context for this full conversation, but is this significant? Like, is this a lot of calls compared to like what a normal use would get?
Well, well, let me try to give you the context. The the budget committee uh came forth with a proposal
Okay.
to significantly, you know, increase the fees for um campgrounds, hotels, and motels.
Okay.
Um, and during the budget process, uh we discussed it a lot. Um, we this, uh, the the budget committee was unhappy that the select board did not put a significant increase and asked us if we would commit to reviewing the process and and the fees which we agreed to.
Right.
That's the, that's the context, that's what brought us here.
Right. And as part of the background, um, I think the last time that we, we live, it's ten dollars a room right now, and that was done.
A dollar per campsite.
Yeah, a dollar per camps, one dollar per campsite per year for each of the campsites, that's the building license cost, and ten dollars per room for the year for um any of the lodging, and the last time that was put in place was twenty, twenty-two or twenty?
Two thousand.
Two thousand three.
Two thousand three, okay, was even worse than I thought, okay. So we've gone from two thousand and three until today with no increases.
Ah.
See, and so as as is the case when that happens,
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
the jump from ten dollars to what they suggested was a hundred dollars was a huge jump, and I don't blame the the um the lodging places for saying that. However, you know, um, two thousand three, it was twenty-two years ago that that we're covering, that we didn't have any increases. We should have done our due diligence and increased every, you know, every few ye- few years, and we prob- and who knows where we'd be now if we had done that. But so there's some, so there's a, there was a gap that because of the, because it was such a huge jump, they had to be, they wanted justification for doing it. So in order to really do that, you'd have to look at what the calls were in twenty, two thousand three, really.
Not sure we can get that.
Yeah, I know, I know. So I'm saying, you, all you're looking at is this last few years, that, you know, the last couple of years, there's a big difference. If you go from eleven thousand people to forty-five thousand people, there's an impact at every level, you know, um, in here, so.
Of course.
So I think the feeling was that, yes, there should be an, now I'm not speaking for anybody, this is me saying, yes, there should be an increase. I'm not sure it would be a hundred, but I would say that for um a twenty-two-year increase, it's gonna be pretty done prob- a lot, you know, more than.
Yeah, and and another thing to consider with that is what would the, you know, what was the lodging fee for a room in twenty?
Yeah, right, exactly.
In twenty-two thousand three versus what's the lodging fee for a room or campsite in twenty twenty-five?
Right. Yeah, right. Right, and I, right, and I think, um, and on the other hand, the reason why it came to a head is because we know that um we're looking at the ambulance services, we're looking at the increases on that, that's gonna be a huge, whatever we do in the future, we know there's gonna be a huge increase in the cost um of the taxes or the impact on the taxes because of that. So all those things, Avery, we were mixing in together, and so we couldn't, we didn't agree with the. So all those things, Avery, we were mixing in together, and so we couldn't, we didn't agree with the Budget Board Committee to just jump it to a hundred because we had nothing to look at. So we're just now starting to look at what the what the um support would be for an increase to how much.
Thanks for, thanks for explaining.
Yeah, so that when we get to budget time.
Yeah.
We we can pick a number.
We can, yeah, we can, you know, um we can have a number, but I think the lodging um increases that we were expecting would be, the lodging licenses go out now? No, no, in January, January. So we kinda would, should have some kind of a thought by January um as to what we would expect. And maybe it's a a three-year increase over a period of time, or maybe, you know, which we can do and that works out better. And then at that point, we would establish, just like we're looking at for the cost of the waste and the um the dump stickers and everything else that we have here, that it repeats, that we have an an automatic increase according to the cost of living, that type of thing. So we look at it guaranteed on a three-year rotation basis or two, three, four, or five, you know, looking out so that we don't have this problem again, and have to stand and be the ones sitting here, have to face the fact that we have to increase that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think too, Kathy, one of the things that you have to think of in that twenty-two or so period
That's smart.
is the cost of service delivery and the the cost of goods and services and all.
Yes. They increased, but this did not.
No.
You know what I'm saying, so, and and you know, and I, and I don't wanna make it, I don't really wanna make it seem like we just want you to pay for all those things that you didn't do in the past. We wanna make, we wanna, I mean, honestly, I'm looking at some of the lodging people that sit in the audience, that we really do want to make sure that it's fair and that we can support some of the increase. Some of it is going to be a little stretchy on how we look at it, but I think um uh overall, there will be an increase, I think. I I mean, I think we should have an increase.
How much for the, I think I, I think Mike, you and I talked about this at one point, do you remember the number of what they paid properties, all the lodging properties in town, what they actually contributed to the tax base with their property taxes?
As far as what the total town's uh value is of the community or?
What they were actually paying in property tax, at one point I had that number, I can't remember what it was now.
Yeah, we did, so I don't have that off the top of my head.
Uh and and I understand what you're saying, but we all pay property taxes on that.
Right.
They pay property taxes and we don't do the the cap, the income approach on any of that, as far as I know, we don't, I, well, she's not here.
Ke- Keely did calculate.
Right, but they cal- they calculate on the selling price of the property, just like they do calculate on the selling price of a home, the selling price of.
For market value.
Right, but there's.
You know, it's the market value that that they pay the property tax on, they're not paying an impact um fee for the use of their business, be- above and beyond that.
But we're talking about, um you're talking about as far as trying to get the metrics and the data together to make sure that it's justified and that it's fair. And I just don't think that it should be lost, that, okay, we're saying there's a disproportionate use of emergency services for roads in town, but by the same token, there's absolutely no use of our schools, which they also pay into the base on. And I'm not saying that's a reason to not increase anything, but I'm just saying that we shouldn't just be looking at this in a vacuum, that while they're using all the police, but whilst meanwhile, they're they're contributing to that, that is a significant portion of our project that they're paying for, that there's no burden on.
But they're, right, but they're paying, right, but what they're paying for on the taxes is what the the property is worth, just like anybody is suing.
Yeah.
They're not paying it on the value.
Right, but those are for services based off of what the cost of our services are, of course, it's based on the value, I mean, I think we all understand that, but the but the whole mill rate is based on what we're providing, what level of service.
Yeah.
Right. Right. Right.
You know, I don't use the police department, does that mean that if Jim calls him three times next month, that he should have to pay more money?
Yeah.
And I'm not, again, I don't want this to be mistaken, that I I I I'm open to the idea of raising the fees, but I just want that considered in the conversation as well because I think it's completely unfair to just say, well, you know, it's business and they're making money, so they've got it, they can just pass it along.
No, we're not looking at the fact that, I I don't think that's a really a fair.
But if you look at.
Well, no, but I've heard that argument, I'm not saying you are.
No, 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 no.
I've heard that argument, and I don't like it.
But if you look at, just to throw a car, I'm reading as quickly as I can this. The reason for a license it determined by the court is that it, you you gotta look at the evaluation of the probable costs associated with administering and enforcing provisions of the town code. Not about.
Valuation.
Or or even lease and, it's whether you can administer the town code by using, and we, you can't use it to raise revenue to pay for those things. It's, the court is saying that.
That's right, I think they said it pretty clearly, yeah.
So we're, we can't look at that and say that's what you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, is is it, is it a revenue raiser? Or is it a reasonably uh um i- is it reasonably attributable to the administrative enforcement enforcement costs?
Right, right, and I understand that, and I and I think that was made clear that we couldn't do that, right, from the beginning.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, yeah, and that was last year, yeah, or beginning of the year.
But I'm saying that the whole conversation
Yes.
came forward to a head because of some of the things that we're looking at and and some of the things that we're going to have to pay for it, that's what brought it to our attention.
A hundred percent, and there's a good laundry list of, like, the court in this, it's crazy, the court gave you a roadmap of the things that you absolutely can look at.
So, I guess I'm.
Right. Right.
But, so Leah, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This isn't town code?
It it doesn't matter, no, so so it's not just town code, the the, I will say that the court definitely says there has to be a nexus to the costs.
Or administration, right?
But the costs can be broad, right? What is attributable to this, when I don't say particular business, but this class of businesses? It's not just Jodeen looking at applications and you having the staff time, it is, okay, you know, I I think this this data you know, is absolutely relevant to the types of costs that can be looked at, yeah.
Right.
And and another thing, it would be nice to know what what the difference, just if it was just the cost of living increases from twenty two thousand three to today. What would, if we had only applied those all along the way, what the what the cost would be now?
An increase in in how much you're paying your staff, right? I mean, and that is, I mean, staff time is one of the biggest um factors that the court's talked about, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Right. Right, exactly, so if you, I think those, I think that more than anything will actually kind of arrive at a fair, and then we can look at other things as well if we want to.
Like, you're giving me a great roadmap to now follow for some additional data that I can get for you, absolutely.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
This makes sense to do it based on some numbers and some evidence, instead of like a, like what you were saying, like a fixed.
Yeah, if we take a two thousand two, look forward, and we look at cost of living increases during that period, and we can attribute that, come up, even if we do in a cost averaging of some sort.
Yeah. Right. Right, which is what we've done with, say, the transfer station on some of the thing, you know, some of the other things that we've looked at on fees that um that hadn't been caught, hadn't been up to date for a while, and then all of a sudden we're here, you know, we had to look at all of those. And then moving forward, again, put it into a rotation of looking at it on a regular basis. So we don't have a twenty-two-year span again, if we want anything.
And I know it's it's really difficult data to to ascertain, but I mean, I think a lot of these licenses come into the clerk's office, how much staff time do they spend? You know, that that is, the court has said, those are things that you absolutely can and should factor into the equation.
But the value of ten dollars then, and the value of of what it is now is another, e- e- each of these things should have a slot on looking at, this is what this is, this is what the staff time is, this is what the impact to the the town is, the infr- whatever it is. And then um and then put them into some kind of.
Now, how much do we collect from this right now, Mike, do you have an approximation from the license site?
Sorry, I don't know the number.
Oh, gosh, we should, we should get that.
I thought, and I could be way off here, but for some reason, around thirty-six thousand was sticking in my mind.
I thought that was.
Yeah, I don't know if it was, I know at one point, the Budget Committee was talking about that number in that forty to sixty thousand dollar range.
Yeah, that might, they might have that information.
Yeah.
Well, because my concern at that point would be if we're even covering staff, staff time and the administration of the license with everything that they're going through, I don't believe we are.
No, 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 that I think is pretty clear on that one.
But not close. This gives me some, a a good way to start to compile some additional data to to supplement what you have there. We can jump on that.
So that, yeah, no, we can have it there, and there will be any, there'll be a number of public hearings and, you know, so there'll be
Oh, of course, oh, sure.
you know, a valid amount of time that um the that um the lodging people can come in and also give us feedback.
So.
Good.
I'm good.
Thank you, we'll uh we'll keep working on it, have some more material.
Thank you for this, you do, you've got this in you.
Yeah, Ed. Aaron did a great job on on that data and.
Oh, my, thank you for us, really, that's all.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Well, maybe, maybe he's watching, cause he wants to see how impressed we were.
Good luck, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron.
We good?
Thank you all for coming, thanks for all the info.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Five zero, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leah.